I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we get all the titles, please? Please be seated. All this meeting in March 24th, City Council, City Council, the order first agenda would be the roll call of council members.
Mr. Baldinger.
Here.
Mr. Botkins. Ms. Earleston.
Here.
Dr. Thelner.
Here.
Mr. Ivy.
Here.
Mr. Richard.
Here.
Mr. Triplet.
Here.
Mr. Botkins, did I call in anything?
Yes, he did.
He did call.
I tried calling you, so if I was in the...
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to excuse.
Make a motion to excuse Mr. Botkins for the evening. Second by, um, Mrs. Earleston back in the corner. Okay, all up there say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, Mr. Botkins hereby accused for the evening. Next, roll call elected officials and safety service director.
Mayor Larry.
Here.
Auditor Trish.
Here.
Director Bla Palmer.
Here.
Treasurer Sparks.
Here.
Safety service director Ward.
Here.
Okay, your recognition of department head, the only one we have here tonight is Medical Berry, uh, City Communication Director. You all received a copy of the March 10th, uh, regular council meeting. You have additions or corrections? Now do I hear a motion to approve or suspend? I'll make a motion to approve March 10th, 2020 regular meeting minutes. Mr. Baldinger made the motion, second by Mr. Triplet. Uh, all on favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed likewise. Uh, minutes of the March 10th meeting hereby approved as presented. Yes, some additions to the agenda tonight, the first is ordinance 2020 dash eight. Do I hear a motion to add that to the agenda? Mr. Triplet made the motion, second by Mr. Richard. Roll call.
Mr. Baldinger.
Will stand.
Ms. Earleston.
Yes.
Dr. Thelner.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Triplet.
Yes.
The 2020, or the 2020 days eight passed by five to one, five to zero, little one extension. Next, the ordinance 2020 day 16, do I hear a motion to add that to the agenda? Mr. Ivy made the motion, second by Mr. Triplet, roll call.
Mr. Baldinger.
Yes.
Ms. Earleston.
Yes.
Dr. Thelner.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Triplet.
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 2020 dash 16 has been added to the agenda by six and a little. Next is ordinance 2020 dash 18, have a motion to add that. Triplet made the motion, second by Mr. Ivy, roll call.
Mr. Baldinger.
Yes.
Ms. Earleston.
Yes.
Dr. Thelner.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Triplet.
Yes.
The ordinance 2020 dash 18 has been added to the agenda by six and a little. Next ordinance 2020 dash 19, do I hear a motion to add that to the agenda?
Make motion to add, uh, 2020 dash 19 to the agenda.
Do you hear the motion to add this ordinance, uh, second by Mr. Richard, second by Mr. Triplet, roll call.
Mr. Baldinger.
Yes.
Ms. Earleston.
Yes.
Dr. Thelner.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Triplet.
Yes.
Okay, the ordinance 2020 dash 19 has been added to the agenda by nineteen, uh, by six and a little. Last one is resolution number 2020 dash seven. Do I hear a motion for this resolution? Do you have it?
I'll make motion to add the resolution 2020 to seven.
Heard by Mr. Richard to add that, second by Mr. Ivy, roll call.
Mr. Baldinger.
Yes.
Ms. Earleston.
Yes.
Dr. Thelner.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Triplet.
Yes.
Here, resolution 2020 dash seven has been added to the agenda by six, six and a little. Uh, you need a motion to approve the agenda as amended, Mr. Triplet made the motion, second by Mr. Baldinger. All up favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise, uh, the motion to approve the agenda has been approved. Moving on to, uh, next is, uh, amend the council rules, uh, maybe Mr. Palmer, you'll address this?
Sure, thank you, Mr. President, members of council. Uh, what you have before you is a proposed revision to the council rules. Uh, the important thing to remember with this is that all the council rules are remaining the same with one exception, there's one small change. And what that is, is a change that creates the opportunity for a new position, uh, to be established in case the president of council and the president pro temp either are both absent or there's conflicts of interest involved. This creates the opportunity for someone else to preside over the meeting at that time so that business can be transacted. Uh, that individual would be the council member who has the longest cumulative service on city council. So if someone was a council member for 10 years, was off for four, was on again for 10 years, that person is 20 years. So that's the way it is. Uh, this is, obviously came about because of, because of the current health situation, but nonetheless, this is not an uncommon idea for any organization to have the, something in place to take care of that kind of contingency. That's it.
Question on council, Dr. Thelner?
So the specific situation that came up is where the, um, council pro temp, uh, there was an absence and then the, uh, fill in the council pro temp. There was one issue on the, uh, agenda that prevented the council, uh, council pro temp from acting. In that situation, would the next, could that provision be executed for that one, uh, item on the agenda? Or would that person, um, take the meeting therefore? Cause I think one of the issues was that, um, the council pro temp did not want to, and correct me if I'm wrong, cause he's here, not even want to open the meeting because that was on the agenda. So, uh, you know, just a point of clarification. This, as it is proposed for you this evening, cover both of those contingencies. Okay. Both for an entire meeting or any portion of a meeting at which there was an absence or a potential conflict of interest. Okay, please.
Other questions to go through, go through.
Mr. Palmer.
Yeah.
Do we, uh, is this a, is a straight vote on this or do we have to suspend rules or anything?
No, this is a straight vote. This is not a typical ordinance or resolution that you would adopt. This is, council adopts their own rules. This is not going to be three meetings, that kind of thing.
By my... It's like, uh, Mrs. Earleston's recent, uh, rules revision, council rules revision.
Right.
You know, it's had to do with decorum and those sorts of things, so.
Same thing.
It is a real world situation. It's not like the hypothetical, the, when a half happened. This is a way to be able to, um, something you're going to have in smaller towns where there's limited number of talented people. So it does affect our ability to inspect and, uh, and the council, right? What's funny is I think you're the cumulative member, aren't you?
Well, that's why I have...
So, yeah, I'd have nothing to do with that provision.
It's my coup de grace.
I have no, I have no, nothing to do with that idea, but...
Mr. Triplet?
So do we need to make a motion to vote?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion to vote on... If you find it.
Council rules.
You really need to make a motion to change that, to make that change.
To amend council rules?
Yeah, to amend council rules as presented.
I'll make a motion to, sometime.
Heard the motion by Mr. Triplet, be right here a second.
I'll second it.
Mr. Richard, second for motion. Any heard the discussion?
I need to roll call it.
Okay, roll call all council members.
Mr. Baldinger.
Yes.
Ms. Earleston.
Yes.
Dr. Thelner.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Triplet.
Yes.
Okay, this, uh, council rule change has passed by six and a little. Moving on to legislation, the first is ordinance 2020 dash eight as the first reading.
President, before we, before we start, I just wanted to, if you will, it sounds a little too procedural, reserve the right for, uh, Mr. Miller, who is here as a guest, within the limit to be able to speak, either to make some brief comments or answer questions when we get down to D, uh, that 2020 appropriations port authority. So if there's any objection, uh, I think he wants to speak for...
I didn't D, right?
Yeah. He, as a member of the board, has a very good view on that, on that subject.
Okay, moving on to the first reading of 2020 dash eight.
Ordinance number 2020 dash eight entitled ordinance clarifying employee pay ranges for certain non-bargaining unit employees, repealing ordinance numbers 2008 dash 54, 2008-25, 2011-17, 2013-46, and 2014-28 to the extent the conflicts with provisions of this ordinance and declaring an emergency.
You heard the read the ordinance discussion? We had to put a bit of discussion on this over the past, but Dr. Thelner?
Um, just to review, this is, uh, to allow the non-bargaining employees of the city to, uh, receive the same consideration that the three unions have received in this current contract. Mr. Palmer, is my math correct? We cannot suspend the rules on this vote? You can suspend the rules, you have six people. Oh, no, you're right, you have a fifth. Okay, I mean, I...
You got an extension.
Okay. Yeah, you're right, Mr. Palmer will probably abstain on that. Okay, no worries. Yeah, yeah. No more discussion.
Stay tuned till next meeting.
Yeah.
Mr. Triplet?
I have a question, I guess this will be for you, Tom. On 2020 maximum, is that the 5% or?
Yes.
Do they need, is it going to be in between that?
It can be nothing, cause there's exempt, it can't exceed that amount. So it's funny, the, all night, the short shelf life of this legislation is just going to keep becoming apparent, you know, the, three, four days ago, the, the, uh, the total amount, I think it's, is 36,000, is that it in total? Something like that. All of the raises of all the exempts at 5%, I think it's 30, you know, my knowledge of that.
36, okay.
Question that wasn't asked, so anyways, we can't vote on it. So we'll see how crazy it is in two more weeks.
Any other decision? Perhaps you've read the first reading of ordinance 2020 dash eight, moving on to ordinance 2020 dash 12, it's also a first reading.
Ordinance number 2020 dash 12 entitled ordinance authorizing an advanced repayment from the Cheshire Debt Service Fund 303 to the General Fund 101 and declaring an emergency.
You heard the reading of the ordinance, the discussion, this is an annual situation.
This comes through finance committee, um, was voted on as a council agenda.
And where the floor is, um, I just wanted to observe that. It's, it's not magic, it only, it only appears when the taxes are paid and the assessments are made, so that, well, you know. So, with that happy notation, I don't, I think we probably are, are, uh, but if it, if it doesn't come through, that's where the, the advance comes from.
True. Exactly right, the first half is in, cause the payment's in January, so we got some of it.
So we got half.
Little bit more, I guess, I'll have to check exactly. Oh, Mark.
Okay, now discussion on the ordinance itself. Further discussion? Do I hear a motion? You suspend the rules, now we need a motion to approve the ordinance. Mr. Triplet?
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance 2020 dash 12.
Heard the, the motion by Mr. Triplet, second by Mr. Richard. Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Triplet.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Baldinger.
Yes.
Ms. Earleston.
Yes.
Dr. Thelner.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Ordinance passed six and, six and, uh, zero. Next is ordinance 2020 dash 13, it's also a first reading.
Ordinance number 2020 dash 13 entitled ordinance amending ordinance number 2019 dash 85, permanent 2020 appropriations by transferring funds within the Health Department funds and declaring an emergency.
Heard the reading of the ordinance, we have a discussion?
Yeah, this also comes through finance committee, um, and, uh, I'm not going to try to explain all this, I'm going to turn it over to Brian for an explanation to the full council.
Basically, the Health Department has asked to lose some money within their budget for the payment of the upcoming audits that they will have and done. This was due to the change, uh, by the state auditor's office required, as you were aware, that the, uh, Health Department be separately audited, uh, effective this year for the 2019 year. And again, if we could pass this as an emergency, because I don't know when we're going to meet next.
Hey, Dr. Thelner?
Yes, um, I'd like to make a motion based on, uh, Mr. Trish's observation. On, uh, next council, uh, I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules on ordinance 2020 dash 13 and, uh, proceed to the final reading.
Heard the motion by Dr. Thelner, suspend the rules of the ordinance, do you have a second? Mr. Ivy, second motion, roll call.
Dr. Thelner.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Triplet.
Yes.
Mr. Baldinger.
Yes.
Ms. Earleston.
Yes.
Got passed by six and a little, discussion on the ordinance. Mr. Triplet?
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance 2020 dash 13.
Heard the motion by Mr. Triplet, second by Mr. Richard, official, roll call.
Mr. Triplet.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Baldinger.
Yes.
Ms. Earleston.
Yes.
Dr. Thelner.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Got also passed by six and a little. Next is ordinance 2020 dash 14, first reading.
Mr. White, I, excuse me, I, I know this is probably a little, um, unconventional, but I'd like to go back to, uh, ordinance 2020 dash 12 and just say one thing. A lot of us got something taped to our front doors today implying that, a letter implying that the city of Galleon was not doing enough for its citizens. I think that the passage of that, this ordinance, is it, is an example that we have some confidence and that we are confident in our, our citizens and helping them out, not waiting for the, the taxes to be paid. That we are going forward, you know, with this. I realize it's not a charity, it's a, you know, a transaction that's, uh, give and take every year, but obviously there's, uh, other circumstances this year. I just think this is, uh, an example of the, the city giving some consideration to its citizens, so, thanks.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, 2020 dash 14, first, first reading.
Ordinance number 2020 dash 14 entitled ordinance amending ordinance number 2019 dash 85, permanent 2020 appropriations by appropriating funds from under appropriate funds to the port authority fund and declaring an emergency.
Heard the reading of, uh, 2020 dash 14, uh, this time maybe Mr. Miller, would you like to report to make any comment?
Uh, sure, so this, I believe, I haven't read the, the ordinance itself, but this addresses the funding request that the port authority had made of council, uh, beginning last November into December, uh, for an operating budget for the current year.
Mr. Triplet?
I know we made the port authority, okay? And I know we're in certain situations here that's nobody's fault. But 150,000 is pretty high. I think if we made this, if we gave you enough money to pay what you have incurred, till we see what the whole situation and the world's going to do, it might be better. I don't, you have any comments or anybody else? I just think that's a lot not knowing, you know, we got utilities, people laid off, we got taxes, people are off. We just don't know what's going to happen.
And it's only the first reading?
Yeah, but, 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 if I might jump in, but, a couple of the things we passed, uh, were passed on Brian's assumption that we weren't going to meet for, who knows, weeks, right? So stop, 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 stop. It is the first reading. The issue I think that brings Mr. Miller here tonight is that, is the only guest, I think, is that, uh, there are commitments to a lawyer that we've made several, uh, meetings ago and he's attended. There's a commitment to a bookkeeper, um, seems to be bonding and insurance, two necessary things. Let's speak a little bit about the bonding, the kind of bonding that they spent a little bit more money on. I think at 30 days to late, to, it's no longer there, I think that's less than 30 days. One of the things that it helps them do is with that bonding, they can draw down one-third of the capital bill that we were talking a little bit about in the committee meeting, the, of the money they need to, to put on that parcel. So, uh, I, I think there are four of them that they need to pay. I, I started out today with Triplet, I, we, we were playing Washington. He was being Pelosi and I, no. Anyways, we were trying to understand how to manage through, cause I, I understand what he said, 150, boom, all of a sudden. It goes back to this shelf life thing. All of this stuff, a week and a half ago, it's like, this is really a great idea, I feel good, we're launching, we're moving ahead. Week and a half, so many things have changed. So, uh, I started out with 80%, I like that. That's what the governor said, 80%, 20% cut. And, uh, Triplet was driving a hard bark and we talked about it for a while, you know. I think if we get him a third and there's a commitment to, uh, come back the next time we meet after we have a lot greater ability to assess those other two-thirds, that that would get them going. I think that's absolute minimum and if I were Mr. Miller and I left here tonight with 50,000, I'd, well, he's not allowed to hug his wife anymore. I'd be unhappy, but I think it allows him to function. So rather than, uh, lose a vote, cause we lose a vote, we're going nowhere. Ain't 50, it ain't anything if we lose a vote tonight. Kind of hoping if we could get an amendment, get it through unanimous, get 50, get that through 6-0, that you could get out of here tonight with 50 grand. And not only did we make a commitment last December, most of us were here, but we'll make, you know, give us a break, if you will, and, um, give us another, a few weeks to see how much more of that is...
So, um, what you're suggesting is that we make wording such that, uh, we commit and Mr. Trish can advance 50 of the 150,000 promise, or?
Actually, if I might just interrupt, I would amend, let me pull this up. 14. The section that has 150 in it, somebody help me, it's got that...
Section two.
Yeah, section two, just, uh, motion to delete that and in that 150, insert 50. Go that route, get unanimous, get the heck out of, onto the next agenda and there, anybody on council that wants this thing to be anything but successful, we just need a month, six weeks of reading.
Mr. Triplet?
I have a question. Would 50,000 with the debts you have incurred now keep you whole?
75 would be better, right, Jeff?
So, I mean, here's the thing, um, it, it would pay all the propagations. Yes. You know, I understand that recent events have changed many people's outlook, including my own, on, on what's happening. So I understand the, the discussion around reduction. However, the smaller the amount of money that the, the council appropriates to the port, hinders our ability to function. So when we have potential projects or looking at potential projects, are trying to hire contractors or other service providers, if we only have enough money to pay our bills for, as we've been operating now, not even having any money to pay bills, with the understanding that we were receiving 150,000 dollars, it does create, uh, issues for us as, as, as far as being able to function. So my only argument would be that since the end of the year, we have been functioning under the understanding that a, that 150,000 dollars had been already appropriated. And that, you know, once we had all of our financial matters in order, which we have accomplished, that all we were needing to do is invoice the city, uh, to receive those funds. So, you know, it's, I would just say that, you know, I personally, uh, expended money on behalf of the port for things like copies, for papers, for meetings, uh, you know, signing up for appeal box. Not a lot of, not a big thing, but, you know, I find it interesting that we ask a volunteer member of a board that's been, you know, approved by a public entity to, to do these things without providing them with any funds and then sort of change things midstream. So I get it, but I, I would just make my point known that I think that, you know, would be better, the more that they could, you could appropriate, the better would be for the port authority.
You, you know, three weeks ago, four weeks ago, ever, everything was hunky-dory, okay? In three weeks, there's been a big change in this whole world. And we have, our income is based on what people pay. And if people don't have jobs, how are they going to pay their bills? You know, whether it was promised or not, there's a lot happened.
I think everybody's going to have to make adjustments and tighten their belts in this situation till we get through this. I mean, everybody's in this together and I think everybody's going to have to tighten their belts and we're going to have to get through this the best way we can. Like Mark says, our income is not only, um, tax money coming in and, uh, the monies from utilities, we also have investments that are falling apart. And, uh, so the city's taking a huge hit right now. So I really think that everybody needs to pull together and tighten their belts and get through this. So, I really think that everybody needs to pull together and tighten their belts and get through this.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Question out of ignorance. We have 400,000 dollars coming up on the parks budget, some of that may not be necessary. And being novice to this process, tit for tat, they get their 150, we take 200 off the agenda for the parks tonight. I mean, I don't even know if that's possible, I have no idea, but it doesn't hurt to ask. Just felt saying no. Anyone?
It's an idea, but I'm not sure, I think we need to refer to Mr. Palmer on that, but I don't think that was intended for the funding months that we're gonna be talking about later.
We can't divert the park fund to other electric or other funds. So, that's, you know, you can, you cannot spend your allocated 400, but that's.
To fund the port.
Yeah, it can't be diverted.
Funds might well went off, thank you for clarification.
It's okay.
I came up during the committee, excuse me, I didn't tell you.
I think we need, with the respect of cautionary opinions here, I do think that we need to keep this idea of port authority alive throughout the uncertainty that we are all facing. I think, you know, the city as a business, looking at it as a business entity, definitely gonna take a hit, but I think we still need to keep the idea of the port authority alive and give it some funding. At 80%, that's 120,000, you know, going back to what the governor said, you know, budget cuts. So, the midpoint between 50 and 120, you know, is, you know, maybe 75. I think there should be a number in there and that we should move forward with the legislation. So, with that in mind, oh, go ahead.
I agree with, it's hard to agree with every sort of point of view on this. I don't think there's that much separation. I do wanna add just one bit of context, and this is roughing it. Brian and I have had this discussion about what's a good forecast number. I think it's 50%. But if you assume that our income tax in the general fund, this is not the dedicated funds, that's the 1%, is off 50%, we're gonna be off between 115 and 125,000 dollars a month. So, if anybody can, you know, it's just, it's arithmetic. If you don't have anything for your kid to do, have him come up here, I can't do that, but, I mean, it's really, it's arithmetic and we're gonna be off, collected just shy of 400,000 the first three months. And, you know, you divide that by three and cut it in half, you're talking about 115, 116 that we're gonna lose. And I'm not sure if 50% is the right number. A number you didn't ask, but I'm gonna go ahead and mention. I am very much of the opinion that our utility revenue is gonna be impacted by percentage terms and have a bigger impact than the impact on our income tax. For reasons that y'all don't wanna hear too much more of, but it just puts it into context. Even losing 50% for one month will be 120,000 dollars, 125,000. And if that persists, I wanna support the port. I don't use I, I, I too much, but here I go. It's my damn idea. So, I don't wanna, I mean, we've been working on this for years, I don't wanna kill it, but there's a lot of money involved here that we need to guard against the short side of that. So, I just wanna, that's the idea, rather than to scuttle it by losing a vote on a number that's too big that we wanna get, we need unanimity tonight before we vote, so we gotta get that, if there is a sweet spot, we gotta get it fast. Hold to another reading, or to just the first reading.
Would 75,000 with that?
That gives us some flexibility, yes. So, I completely understand, I'm not, I'm not saying we need to, I want you to approve the whole 150, I get it, okay? I'm just saying that, you know, it does, the lower we go, it just restricts our ability to actually function and actively pursue economic development opportunities for the city, which in turn will help with the current, you know, situation.
But you can't be actively seeking them right now.
But they're, they're gonna be there.
I know they're gonna be there, but.
They need a little, they need to, when the opportunity does arise, that they're gonna need to try and act rather than coming back and say, hey, remember the 100,000 that you guys promised? You know, it's gonna be harder to give him 100, another 100,000 in three months and, you know, than it is 75 right now to at least, if he's got some opportunities lined up, then I.
Mr. President? I'll trade you a minute later on the mayor's report for one more comment on this. The, the, it's really a matter of them being able to function will enable them to draw down that half million that was secured a few years ago. You talk about something that makes us freeze where it's at, is the ability to exercise the bond, get that put in place, make the request, first to delay the funding through the state capital bill, a lot of work been done to accomplish that, and then to draw down that first half million. They don't have, you know, they get enough gas to get seven eighths of the way there and they end up short. It'll be, you know, it'll, it'll be 75 down the drain and we won't be able to get at that other half million. So, I think that is another factor.
They give you hard numbers, so for the current contracts that we have and have signed or bills that we have due, we're looking right around 27,000 dollars, okay? That's for some contracts that last a couple more months down the road or even through the end of the year, like for accounting software, for example. With some of the anticipated fees that we're going to have from a legal perspective, that I don't think we necessarily can get around, in fact, due to the fact that we're actively engaged in a project at the moment, you know, that number as a projection is really in the 50,000 dollar range total. So, when you're talking about 75, that gives us a little room then for trying to negotiate some of the other contracts. But, you know, like, unfortunately, some of the services for some of the things that we look at aren't cheap. And sometimes, some of those services need to be done in advance of us looking at a project. So, for example, you know, we, we had a quote drawn up for soil borings, you know, drilling holes in the ground. It's like between eight and 12,000 dollars to do that on a parcel, that's a lot of money. And so, before we commit, you know, or try to commit millions of dollars of, in development funds to something, on a property we can't even build on, those are things that, you know, the port may have to enter agreements for. So, they're, you know, if not 100, 200, 300 dollar things here, it's unfortunately larger ticket items. And if we don't have the ability to say, you know, yes immediately, it can just delay things, that's all, it would just delay things. So, but, you know, as a firm commitment, you know, as far as the emergency goes, Mark, there are insurance contracts that were signed under the understanding that we had funds. So, those payments are due by the 9th of April. If they're not due, if they're not received, we lose our insurance and bonding. We have an outstanding bill to our attorneys for 10,342, which covers all the work that they provided us in the setup last year through the end of February. We have a consulting contract with Robin Hildebrand, who's helping with setting up our accounting structure and rules. That's for 2,500 dollars, it lasts for three months. We've just signed a contract with a financial advisor in Columbus to look at financing of the proposed rec center. It's also a three-month contract, 7,500 dollars. And then just odds and ends as far as things like accounting software and the computers from the, from the auditors state, all that, it's totaled about 2,500 dollars. That's how I'm getting that 27,000 dollar number, that's the hard number. And the soft addition, I would say about 25,000 for additional legal expenses for the year. And then whatever cushion you'd be willing to provide us for additional operations.
Mr. Volger? Yeah, I have a question. Mayor mentioned about 500,000 dollars worth of money, how many state monies coming in? Is that guaranteed monies or is that money in jeopardy at this particular time because of the state of the economy and the various?
Those are funds that were appropriated as part of the state capital bill from two years ago. So, they've already been awarded and the port is the project sponsor for that. We've already had the application approved and we have our contract ready to sign, so that's, that's good to know. Obviously, that works like most other grants, we have secured bondies, but we can get some advanced funds, but the other funds are gonna have to come from somewhere for, you know.
Is there any possibility that the state will be making adjustments to those appropriations to, to our port?
I don't, I don't believe so. Mayor earlier probably.
I don't think so, Joe. I think the, whether there'll be another capital bill here in a few months, I, 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 might be unlikely. We hoped, we made some requests, but no, that's money that went through controlling board, it's waiting for pickup, if you will. They will extend it and I think they probably will, but if you remember, we had to get that done by 1st of July, it didn't turn out to be exactly that way. So, an extension and the money's there for us.
Further discussion? Mr. Tripple?
I got a question for either Brian or Mayor. Okay, if we give them 100,000 dollars and we run into with this medical emergency, a tax issue.
No. I think, anticipate the question mark, no. I don't think we can say, give us 30,000 dollars back. I think we're better to, to, to split the difference, if that's the right word, at 75. And then if things continue to deteriorate or deteriorate over a longer period of time, then it's gonna have to sit still. I think we all would like to fulfill that first-year commitment if we get back within, make up a number now, say 10 or 15% of our original projection. We'd probably be able to weather that storm. So, at the end of the airport, 85% of projection, we could probably honor that full commitment and, you know, have a, have a good trust relationship developed with the port.
So, am I correct in then, if we would approve 75,000 tonight, that would see you to meet your obligations with some little extra? Because again, I think everyone here, we voted to create you folks and we want you to succeed in our community. But like Mark and many others here have said, is there, we're in a strange new world right at the moment. So, if that's, would be the thing, that I would be willing for that.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I think I can go with the 50% now and 50% in the future, some date in future. Who knows what that date may be with this, with what's going on. But the other 50% to come later in the year. Mr. Trish?
Yeah, I, this is directed to the law director and court counsel, constable person. We've not done this where we probably have to pass this in an emergency. Do we make the amendment?
Correct.
Then pass that?
Amendment first, suspend rule second.
Then pass them third. I just wanted to make sure that I didn't have a problem coming out of the.
Procedure.
I think the council's making a wise decision.
Just as a. Mr. Tripple?
Okay, if we amend section 2 to read that instead 150,000 be 75,000 be appropriated from unappropriated funds and that number to the port authority, would we have to put anything that the other 75 could possibly?
No. Wouldn't have to.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to amend that section to read instead of 150,000 to read 75,000, but the rest of it staying the same.
I'm gonna answer Tripple to amend it to 75,000, the second by Mr. Richard, Pro Paul.
Mr. Tripple?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Baldinger?
Yes.
Ms. Earlston?
Yes.
Dr. Felner?
Yes.
Mr. Ivy?
Yes.
Amendment's motion is passed by six votes. Next would be to suspend the rules, Mr. Tripple?
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules on amended ordinance 2020-14 and go to the final, and go to final reading.
Heard the motion by Mr. Tripple to suspend the rules. Have a second, Mr. Volger, your second motion, also Pro Paul.
Mr. Tripple?
Yes.
Mr. Baldinger?
Yes.
Ms. Earlston?
Yes.
Dr. Felner?
Yes.
Mr. Ivy?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Key that passed also by six votes. Uh, go back to the ordinance itself, Mr. Tripple?
I'd like to make a motion to pass amended ordinance 2020-14.
Okay, you heard the motion, have a second, Dr. Felner, second motion. Station, if not Pro Paul?
Mr. Tripple?
Yes.
Dr. Felner?
Yes.
Mr. Ivy?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Baldinger?
Yes.
Ms. Earlston?
Yes.
Also passed by six votes. Moving on to ordinance 2020-15, that's first reading.
Ordinance number 2020-15 entitled Ordinance Adopting a Credit Card Policy for the City of Galleon.
Okay, discussion? This has also come through finance committee at the end of the night. I guess Brian brought to our attention that we have the ability to issue some credit cards for, I guess, for training and traveling expenses and all that. Mr. Trish, explain how the policy's gonna work.
One of the things we've run into as time progresses is not only do we have travel and, of course, that may change in the next six months, but we also have purchases that we need to make that occasionally require a credit card. We don't have one for the city, so what we're doing is something that the auditor, state auditor has a problem with, we're using personal credit cards and doing re-personal. They would rather have it on a city card. So, moving forward on this, I wanna compliment my staff for having put this together following the auditor of state's recommendations and guidelines for this. We meet them all. We've also met with United Bank and the banking community to make sure we can do this, to put controls on these and a limit for the credit card purchases on that. We would like to get this passed, and I hate to say this, I'm sounding like a broken record tonight, I'd like to do this as an emergency also, so we can move forward on this. If there are questions, I'll be delighted to answer them, of course.
Did, did we, we talked about a limit for the credit card, didn't we, like 5,000?
5,000 and the other issue is on any of the credit cards for this, we have to pay those monthly to pay off the balance, we cannot.
So, we don't require interest?
Right, we don't. Or points. Or, yes.
Well, airline, I mean, that's.
Yeah, it's an interesting question, there would be no points on the city card and that's the question that was raised by the state auditor when we have individuals purchase something on their card, if there are points, those technically are ours.
That's right.
So, that's why we wanna do this. Mr. Tripple?
Are you gonna control the cards?
It will be paid by my office, yes.
I mean, they're not just gonna be floating around?
No, we're not gonna hand them out like playing cards, no.
The keys to this building.
Where the sky?
Who would be allowed to use the cards if there only is?
At this point, it would be, it would be direction of the city card by my office. So, that would allow, for example, if it comes on Thomas for a second, he needs to attend a conference. As the law director, we would give him a card for that. The supervisors of each of the departments would have access to that to be able to get the card to purchase something or for training for, for example, we send a lineman down or up to a lineman's school on that.
So, you would, basically, you would be the one to say you can take the card, bring it back?
You would send or I, yes.
Okay.
Order discussion, first?
Two things. I think being in a dark age is not having a credit card, so, but it said, the only thing is, I don't see a limit on this thing and I don't know if you need one, so.
Says determined by the auditor.
By the.
We determine, it doesn't have any meaning, it would be five?
No, he has a discretion to determine.
Okay. All right, that's the only thing, but that's all, I guess.
Mr. Ivy?
Is it cards or card?
Cards.
How many?
Yep.
We, we could issue up to five.
But that wouldn't be 5,000 a card, that'd be 5,000 total.
Five cards.
A thousand dollars.
Yeah, 5,000.
Thousand dollars a card. Ms. Earleston?
Okay, this may be a stupid question that was just addressed, but it doesn't have that number on here. Is that, does that need to be on here? Is that?
It has a discretion, it's in a discretion of the auditor that is on here.
Right, but that, that leaves that.
So he could set that and he could.
So he could set it lower or raise it too, so.
Right, so that doesn't, that does, so by, if we pass this, we're not saying there's 5,000 dollar limit. We're saying could be.
I'm saying right now that's what it's going to be, but it could change because of a financial situation in the city or, and/or where we find out that we have to have something, I can't foresee it, but we couldn't foresee quarantine either, so.
I think council needs to amend this and put that limit in here. And then if it gets to be a problem, it would just come back to council to increase that limit, get council approval for that increase.
That's what I was considering, then if there, you would need to, to, if you're finding you needed a higher level or something, there would be something that possibly could come back.
Right, we can always adjust it.
Through council, make adjustments to that.
You're gonna get a monthly report. It's your discretion.
Okay, Mayor?
Mr. Trish, the best of your recollection or knowledge, has the city ever had a credit card?
Not since fiscal emergencies.
Okay, just, that you stopped the que, the question was, has the city ever had a credit card? It said yes or no?
Yes. Yes.
And the answer is yes. And it was part of the unraveling, correct?
Yes.
And the credit card didn't do it. It's the people.
The holders.
That had the credit card. So I'm, I'm not compelled. I won't veto it, but I'm not compelled. We're getting along. I don't know. Now, I, I know, I know the issue with the reimbursement of people and all that kind of stuff.
Putting it on our personal cards.
Excuse me? Sorry?
Putting it on our personal cards. I agree with, agree with, we should not be doing that. People should not be putting stuff on our personal cards.
But why are we buying stuff they need to put on their personal cards when they can get a purchase order?
Amazon?
Well, that, so.
Something from.
You can get cheaper elsewhere.
I don't wanna. It wasn't the credit card, it wasn't the limit, it was the use of the credit card. And my recollection, it wasn't just like once or twice. There's this routine of going to Ontario and charging meals. So I don't know why we're doing it, but let's pass on emergency, so you don't have to hear from me again. Nothing good came from it before, y'all. Not one good thing came from it before.
So I think, you know, based on Ms. Earleston's recommendation, I think setting the limit would help the situation of it getting out of control. Although, obviously, what, nobody charged up a million dollars on a credit card to another bank for the electric fund, but. If we get a report, if we get a report, you know, we'll be able to, through finance committee meeting, we'll be able to see what the exact expenditures are, just like you review your own. So I, I, I do think that, you know, in a pinch, it, it, it needs to be on hand.
There were findings for recovery, if I might, on this specification. There weren't, that, nobody could track down the million, but they could track this down.
Sure.
So I, I mean, I just, if there's something good came from it before, like list it out for me and if there's some advantage other than convenience in buying from Amazon, I, I don't get it. But I won't veto it. Let's get on with it.
Mr. Tripplett?
Will whatever's charged, how are the accounts gonna pay the credit card? For wherever it's charged to?
Yeah. For example, if it's traveled for training in the law, you know, if you're picking on Thomas, it would be charged to the law office or the law care.
Well, I definitely think if we're gonna have one, we need a limit on here instead of just saying you're gonna limit it.
Exactly.
I mean, not, nothing against you, babe.
I think it's just, you know.
That, credit cards can get people in trouble.
That's the first reading, do you want to?
How, what are your thoughts on, on a limit in the report through the finance committee?
I think the 5,000 dollar limit and if there was an emergency, they could come back here and say more. I, I think that's good. I can't see anybody taking, telling you fly to California if we weren't in a medical emergency for a couple hundred bucks.
I think if an expenditure exceeds 5,000 dollars, you just tell the council to accrue the expenditure in the first place.
Well, they have to.
Well, I know, I'm just saying. Mayor?
One of the things that might be a practice to follow, I don't even suggest it's a best practice, but on the community action commission board, they use credit cards and then the monthly financial report by their fiscal person, we're provided a detail of the credit card purchases. I think that could probably be easily accomplished along with that reconciliation check roster that y'all can't wait to get once Rod's done with it.
It's already required in your, in your.
Okay, thank, it's in that policy?
Yes.
Okay, that's good.
Yes, I agree. I think a 5,000 dollar limit in, in writing is a great idea and then I'm sure that Brian would be happy to give the finance committee, committee monthly statements that we can review and discuss as needed. And that should be in the amendment as well, if possible.
Well, he just said it's already in there, right, Brian?
Yes.
Well, I was gonna say, based on the discussion, if it would be possible that we could make an amendment to this with a 5,000 dollar limit.
Yep. What section? That would be, if I may, Dr. Felner?
Sure.
Madam, if you look under article one, section two, it currently reads, the maximum limit for the use of a credit card or charge account will be determined by the auditor or their designate from, will be, and after that, determined by the auditor. The structure and the terms will be 5,000 dollars as the amendment.
Took the words right out of my mouth.
I always wanted to do the play more here.
Yep, that works. Okay, Dr. Felner?
Yes, I'd like to make the motion to amend section two of the credit card policy and add, strike the phrase determined by the auditor or their designate and insert 5,000 dollars, so that section two reads, the maximum limit for the use of a credit card or charge card will be 5,000 dollars.
Heard the motion by Dr. Felner. Do we have a second? Okay, Mr. Ivy, seconded. Pro call.
Dr. Felner?
Yes.
Mr. Ivy?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Tripplett?
Yes.
Mr. Baldinger?
Yes.
Ms. Earleston?
Yes.
Amendment to the motion, uh, passed by six in a vote. Now, back to the board itself. Dr. Felner?
Brian, do we want to suspend the rules on this or let it ride or how? I mean, it's necessary, but is the language in there for?
I will point out the fact that there's no emergency clause on this, which means it's gonna take 30 days to become effective anyway.
Okay.
Yes, it will, that's gonna make it extremely long, I suspect, if, I mean, it's gonna probably, I don't know when the next council meeting will be. I'm just gonna let you know that if you do suspend the rules, there is a 30-day week.
I'd like to make a motion to go ahead and suspend the rules for this ordinance and proceed to the final reading.
Heard the question by Dr. Felner to suspend the rules. A second? Ms. Earleston, back here, seconded. Pro call.
Dr. Felner?
Yes.
Ms. Earleston?
Yes.
Mr. Ivy?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Tripplett?
Yes.
Mr. Baldinger?
Yes.
Okay, that's passed by six in a vote. The ordinance, discussion on that? Motion by Mr. Tripplett?
Oh, I can't comment yet. Is there a dire need to have this card now or, I mean?
Now you suspended the rules.
You suspended the rules.
No, I was just curious. I, I'm just curious.
Within the next 30 days, no. But there's not gonna be trouble, at least for two weeks of that.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
What we will do, if I can complete the answer then, Mr. Tripplett, if we do run into where we have to make an emergency purchase somehow, we'll hit somebody's credit card on that. But we'll go from there.
Mr. Tripplett?
I make a motion to pass ordinance 2020-14.
Okay, motion by Mr. Tripplett, seconded by Mr. Ivy. Pro call.
Mr. Tripplett?
Yes.
Mr. Ivy?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Baldinger?
Yes.
Ms. Earleston?
Yes.
Dr. Felner?
Yes.
It also passed by six in a vote. Moving on to ordinance 2020-16, that's first reading.
Ordinance number 2020-16 entitled ordinance requesting the trustees of the Agri and M. Freeze Foundation to distribute income therefrom to the city of Galleon for the purposes outlined herein and declaring an emergency.
Heard the statement of the ordinance, question? Mr. Ivy?
Yes, this ordinance came out of the Parks and Recreation Committee and is the recommendation from Freeze Board for the city parks for this upcoming year.
Mr. lawyer?
Yes, this, I'm assuming it's a 390 number. I know there's a 400 number down here further. Is this money already secured by Freeze Fund? Is this money they already have in there? It's not gonna be affected by what is happening in the markets? Going on with the market?
Clarify that. I do believe so.
Yeah, there's a letter, I don't know if it was in your packet or not, but there's a letter that came from Mr. Garbry, who's, I think, the chairman, or whatever, acting chairman, but the letter came from, from Grant. It's still 465 and some hundreds and tens of change.
Placed it there in the amendment.
Is it in there? So that's where that number came from and that's the number we're working for. If I may, if, is my habit overanswer the question, I would say that this is, these are the recommendations. Some may fall out for different reasons. I think probably particularly, what would I, what's under B, the 75,000 for the city schools? That's a list of four projects and the, and the message back to the athletic director is if you receive 75,000 dollars in Freeze Funds, will you proceed with these four projects? So I think once this moves along, we'll hear back. I'd say if, if that project falls out, I'd recommend most likely not allocating it to anyone. If I may. Part of me, I don't have another project. There may be a difference of opinion about that, but we may be better off to just let that remain in the, remain within the endowment itself.
Are these, are this 75,000 dollars to be used by city guy in schools towards other projects? Are these qualified projects under the Freeze Fund?
Yes, the city, the school system, to my memory, proposed about 162,000 dollars over four topics. 98,000 of it was to replace the six lights in the land, or the stadium lights with four. And then there were three other proposals that the school system wanted for the soccer fields that they're putting up. When we met with, when Mr. Richard and Mr. Baldinger I met, we, you know, that was kind of, I, I wanna make sure, like the mayor just alluded to, that, you know, forgive the brashness, but, you know, all four or none, you know, I don't want, I didn't want 65,000 dollars in three projects and then the school system, not saying that they would, but always imagine worst case scenario, well, if they're gonna give us a 75 this year, let's just do these three things, but with the lights off till next year. So that's what the mayor was just alluding to. Their total estimate is about 162,000 and if the city would agree to supplement 75,000 of that, if and only if they agreed to move forward with all four projects. Is that correct?
I think that's a good way to say it. I think there was unanimity around trying to replace the mid 1970s, electric poles or electric standards and lukewarm on the soccer improvements. But from my point of view on that, that there's been such a good relationship between the schools and the city and use of Freeze Funds, you know, I didn't, you know, I didn't. There's some misgivings, I think, among some of us about putting any money, but particularly tens of thousands of these dollars on school property on the new campus. But there doesn't seem to be any express reservation about putting those dollars in, within Heisey Park, even though I think everyone acknowledges that the, that the football field lights are on the school property. There hasn't been, at least at this point, any voice of judgment. Anyway, that's where we are on that one.
Other discussion?
Is the, so the 75,000 from the schools, that, that's enough for them to proceed, proceed with the projects they have?
If and only if they decide to fund up the other 87,000 dollars.
Okay.
Cause it's 162,000 and 162,000 change total for the four projects that they proposed to us.
Okay.
So what happens to 75 if they don't?
Comes right back to the city.
They're gonna be affected by the economy too.
That's what the mayor just said.
Exactly.
It comes back and we can look into another project or, you know, whatever the case may be at that time.
So we can do the funds here locally in the city.
No. No, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Rob.
Go ahead. Chair, I'm gonna make sure I do this procedural. We will receive from Freeze Foundation a check for 475,000 and change on that.
465.
465, I'm sorry. I got 75 from the school, I apologize.
We have to divvy it out to the school then.
We would write that.
No, yeah, yeah. If they don't want the 75 grand, I try to take a swing at that same question. I recommend just letting it sit there or even formally sending, cutting a check, Brian, cutting a check and sending it back to the foundation. That, I don't know if I like that idea. After I said it, it sounded good as I was thinking it. I don't like that I said it. The other project that we may want to, to keep an eye out on that relates to something that the governor said, I think, two days ago in connection with the question about the state capital bill. And I don't wanna be too smart out, but he kinda blew it off. He kinda laughed, you know, like, hey, man, I gotta get through the next 30 days or whatever. I'm not worried about a capital bill due in July. So I think that's a sort of an indication of the, the lack of priority that a state capital bill may have or the timeliness. I mean, they like to do it right in July of the off year, a few months ahead of the election. But who's to say that the capital bill may, if it happens, be smaller and happen later? Having said all that, I think having some money, if we have some extra Freeze money, we may wanna make sure that the park square gets done completely. And I'm not sure, 60,000, if you get into that, that only was, was about half of the improvements. So I think the committee members remember that.
Okay, Ms. Earleston?
Has this, have we already discussed this with the school system and they're aware of this situation?
I think the mayor just.
Yeah, I think Matt, they've exchanged emails. Go ahead, Matt.
Correct. Yes, we have been in contact with the athletic director by email.
And what, what are their thoughts, what are their thoughts regarding this? What are their, how are they feeling about this?
The school, in addition to some of the, like, parents groups, the sports clubs, they've raised, I think, about 40,000 so far and then they were going to approach, you know, the school board and their different groups on, you know, can we come up with, with the remaining, you know, whatever that number is or not? And they have not followed up with this yet.
So they don't know if they're gonna be able to, to reach that number to be able to accept?
Not at this time, correct.
So at this point in time, they're about 45 to 48,000 dollars short of their goal.
Correct.
Okay.
And, and is there a deadline they would have to have that money by in order to accept the, did I miss?
I don't think so, Tammy.
Okay.
We'll work with them.
Okay.
There's so much up in the air about public contracting that I think we all have a sense of that I won't get into in detail. So everything from. So everything from, oh, dot highway projects through nature works grants that we pounded on, uh, the bathroom money. The one we've got, we have that cash, but there's no allocation for this year. A lot of that has to do with the new capital bill, so. All right, I don't know, we're talking, but we're going to give them as much time as they need, and I'm glad Matt had that, that detail of a report that they're working towards that.
Okay, what's your pleasure?
Um, just president members, um, because, one thing, because of the fact that, uh, we're not sure when the next time we'll actually be able to meet, uh, I know that this goes back to the Freeze to have their final approval. I feel that, uh, given those facts and what we've already discussed, that to move this to a final reading would be the most best way to proceed at this time. So with that stated, I'm going to make a motion to, uh, move ordinance twenty twenty dash sixteen, uh, to the final reading with suspension of rules.
Good going, Mr. Richard. Split the rules, second by Mr. Dravy. Roll call.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Triplet.
Yes.
Mr. Baldinger.
Yes.
Ms. Earleston.
Yes.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
It's passed by six in the vote. Uh, discussion on the ordinance?
Hey, may I say one thing real quick? I know the act about, that safety fence, and people have been around here, I mean, I don't know how many times we forgot it, and then a couple of times we tried to forget it. So that's, I mean, it's been obvious need since we were able to spend money on projects, an ongoing safety issue. So I feel good about that. If we can get this all the way through the process, that'll be a, um, fun project. First, to find a contractor, and second, get it constructed. But I'm, I'm excited about that. It's, uh, long overdue.
Mr. Triplet?
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance twenty twenty dash sixteen.
Good motion by Mr. Triplet. Second by Mr. Earleston. Uh, roll call.
Mr. Triplet.
Yes.
Ms. Earleston.
Yes.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Baldinger.
Yes.
Okay, passed by six in the vote. We're going to have to order it twenty twenty dash seventeen, first reading.
Ordinance number twenty twenty dash seventeen, and town ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into land transfer agreement to transfer property to the Gallion Port Authority and declaring an emergency.
Any discussion on this ordinance? Dr. Felner?
Yes, um, this, uh, subject was discussed, uh, in the Airport Economic Development, um, a month at least, uh, ago. Um, there were some efforts to move it, um, rather quickly, uh, but with, um, discussion with Mr. Palmer, um, there were some, uh, wording and legal issues to, to work out. Can you elaborate on some of this?
Certainly. Um, it's just like any transfer of land. Uh, this is the first time we've ever done this. Port Authority is brand-new. Uh, this is our first experience with transferring land owned by the city. Uh, you might remember that this land in question we got as a gift to us, but nevertheless, this is some, this is real property that needs to be transferred in a real way. Uh, and there were some, some, I wouldn't call them issues, but things that the city wanted to see in here, and so there was a negotiation that went on with the Port Authority through yours truly and also David Rogers, who's the attorney for the Port Authority, and I will tell you that that was concluded about two o'clock this afternoon. So all's well that ends well, I say. Um, and so you have before you the, uh, agreement, and this would effectuate the transfer. What you're doing with the ordinance is to authorize Nikki to sign this, but also to authorize the signature on the deed and any other documents necessary to make it happen.
Dr. Felner?
Chad, um, this, uh, transfer also aids your organization to proceed with, uh, clearing of, uh, some land. I don't know if those deadlines are still able to be met or some that...
Well, that's a very good question.
The bats will be happy, I'm sure.
So there is the March thirty-first deadline to clear trees for the Indiana bats, and, uh, you know, part of the monies from the state capital bill that we're receiving have been appropriated for that particular project. So obviously, the haste behind this is, uh, the contractor for the tree removal would prefer to see the property in the Port Authority's name prior to them performing work on the property, or at least this ordinance passed, uh, by the city so that we can, you know, show them that and say, hey, listen, uh, this is on its way before they start going in there and cutting trees down.
Mr. Dravy?
Uh, just to, for clarification, this is only one of the two initial parcels that we were in discussion with, and it's the one just behind the Valero gas station adjacent to thirty.
And I believe that the mayor has already sent the city out to do some tree clearings. If you've been by there, you can see some of the trees have been taken down, but yes, it was revised. The Richmond request was for both parcels, however, um, because of the subdivision requirements for the, uh, parcel used for the, just the basically access to the property, um, it was determined to be better just to do this parcel initially because the city can grant us right away to, to go back there and do the work we need.
That's one of those things that was ironed through.
Yeah.
Ironed out. Mr. President?
Mr. Triplet?
Go ahead. Go ahead. Your meaning?
Well, since this is the twenty-fourth, I'd like to suspend the rules on twenty twenty dash seventeen, since he's only got seven days to get bats out.
Trees.
Trees.
Bats. I'll second.
Okay, wish for Mr. Triplet to say, or Mr. Ivy to split the rules. Roll call.
Mr. Triplet.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Baldinger.
Yes.
Ms. Earleston.
Yes.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Okay, passed by six in the vote. Uh, the ordinance itself, Mr. Ivy?
I'd like to make a motion to bring ordinance twenty twenty dash seventeen to council for my own vote.
Okay.
Have you just refrated to?
Actually passed.
That's his pass.
Oh. A motion to pass, possibly pass my own vote. That's great, there you go.
I got in trouble for that before. I am so sorry, but mom could start sweating a little less.
It's a slippery slope.
I knew I butchered.
Is your motion able to pass the ordinance, Mr. Dravy?
Yes.
Okay, that was second. Mr. Triplet, seconded. Roll call.
Mr. President? The, because I probably complain about Palmer five or six times a week about getting stuff throughputted fast enough for me. Always problem about that. This really is...
I remember sorrow.
I know, but I'd say on this, this is really, this is really a, uh, important piece of work, got put on the fast track, and so it proves that there is a fast track, Thomas. I don't know, man. So I want to thank you for it. But it'd be, there's still a lot of pressure to get a lot of stuff done in a hurry. It's hard to meet all that, you know, somebody tapping their foot outside your office, so I thank you a lot, get this thing moved along, so.
I think I say your welcome.
It's compliment, man. Honestly.
I would interpret it that way.
It's as nice as I can get.
Roll call.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Triplet.
Yes.
Mr. Baldinger.
Yes.
Ms. Earleston.
Yes.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Okay, passed by six in the vote. And ordinance twenty twenty dash eighteen, first reading?
It's at eighteen, right. Ordinance number twenty twenty dash eighteen, and town ordinance submitting ordinance number two thousand nineteen dash eighty-five by appropriating funds from unappropriated funds and various city funds and declaring an emergency.
Okay, you've written the original ordinance, discussion?
Yeah, I believe this is still, I'll say the one we put on tonight. This is still the one that went through committee, I believe. Um, and I'm going to refer to Brian Trish on this also.
I'm actually going to look at the mayor on some of it.
I think the whole ordinance.
Okay.
The first two sections are needed, uh, in order to perform the rate study, correct, Madam Service Director? So those two twelves are money. All the contract services have already been, uh, committed to other things. There's that drilling that we had with, uh, C T L, isn't that the name of the company? Out of the rez, it ate up the water money and something else that ate up money for contract services and sewer. There's enough money there for storm sewer, uh, in that overall rate study. The rest of the stuff, uh, we don't need as bad, but we need to be ready for. So this, the idea of adding those and talking with committee about it came from, um, what I think will probably be, um, something that would change, and that's that we aren't going to be, we aren't going to meet anytime during April. I'm not sure, I'm not, I'm not sure that will work, but if you all are committed to doing that, what this is devised for is to have some extra spending in the same two utilities that we're a little concerned about their fund balance and the lack of payments might do to it. It's a little confusing, but why we would like to have some extra money is that if our first two attempts to staff the filtration plans, the wastewater treatment by the filtration plant, um, is vexed by the virus. In other words, if our efforts to, uh, if one of our, um, operators is ill, tests ill or sick, we keep them home. We're going to use our first line as other workers, probably spend a little overtime. The next line, we hope we don't get to, is perhaps some cross-training and something we haven't affected yet, but are going to start talking about tomorrow, Nikki, with some other cities in the community. The idea of making licensed operators working for other communities, uh, familiar with our plan. Now, clearly, they're not trained on our plan, but, uh, so that's the second wave. And if either we can't offer help because of illness, or they can't, you know, Red Rover over a few people to help us, then that's where this would come in, and that would be, a portion of these dollars would be available to hire, uh, licensed contract operators that are out there. I was told, uh, today that a village, I'll go ahead, it doesn't matter that much, but, uh, our city engineer told me that Green Springs, the village of Green Springs, that very thing happened to them. That the operators that they had, like, the E P M had three operators, they're all sick. And so they had to hire a contractor, a guy that Lynn recommended to us, and he's up there running, I think, their wastewater plant for, for the foreseeable future. So that's, that's the, the specific use that we see as a possibility is the need to hire contract operators, and that's what that money's there for.
So, um, sections three through eight refer to that, just in the various funds, of the various...
I don't know about eight, let me look. You got eighty-seven thousand in electric fund. Yeah, that would be the same sort of thing. That we, and, and, and in this case, Mark, uh, everybody got sick, everybody at Shelby got sick, all of our mutual aid, when, when AMP was all tapped out, that's first two lines of defense. The third one is calling Main Light, da-da-da, uh, putting in place a contract arrangement for them in the emergency situation where three of our linemen are off for two weeks. The same bad luck or bad, uh, circumstances puts Shelby in a position not to, to provide people through mutual aid. You get much outside of Shelby, and you know this better than anyone in the room, outside of Shelby on mutual aid, you're, yeah, it's on paper, but it doesn't really happen much.
You guys are expensive, Mark.
We are the only ones that are close enough to have it working anyway. So that was really, that's, that's the thinking there, that we had to bring in a crew, uh, either in a, in an emergency weather situation that lined up with a bunch of sick guys. That's really what that is. So all this money is just in a emergency case? And that's why I said I hate the ordinance. In the first half, we probably need that if you want to do the rate structure. If we're not going to meet for another month, then I start liking the ordinance, because I, we're going to need to be in a position, uh, to move some contracts. You know, certainly if we sign a contract above fifty thousand, negotiate one for personal service or something, you know, like, uh, with, uh, Main Light, for instance, we're going to have to figure out some way to get that through council. As far as I understand purchasing, if we had a thirty thousand with Vaughn and a forty thousand with Main Light, then we, you know...
Mr. Baldinger, excuse me.
That's all right.
Okay, Mr. Bowyer?
Yeah, um, I kind of like what the mayor's thinking here, because, uh, and I think it should be council's goal to strive not coming in here in April, um, just because all the restrictions being placed on everybody. I think this extra money being in place for them to spend for emergency purposes is a good idea. The only question I have is what happens to these funds if we get through this and they're not spent?
Yeah, I would, I would do a couple of things. I'd decrease the appropriation if, if there's a concern that we're going to run off and buy that bucket directly for, or something like that, uh, we can reduce that. I, I really, the, my biggest worry, I think, some of you have heard, Brian's awake, is the depletion of the fund balance. And that's really the main reason, I'm kind of nervous to recommend that, because one of my biggest issues is people, if the, if the payment stream dries up, in other words, if people who have the money don't pay us. I don't think there's any question that people who get laid off and can't afford it are going to get treated by Miss Ward the same way people have for the last several months of every doggone winter when people can't pay. Keep them on, we work with them, we give them a payment arrangement. But I tell you what will screw up everything in this town, is that people like myself who get a pension, who have money coming in, or who have the income that's non-interrupted, if they somehow think it's funny, or their businesses think it's funny not to pay their utility bill, we're going to be in a world of hurt real fast. So that's the flip side of if you, if you go to over-appropriate, uh, you know, if, excuse me, if you go to appropriate this extra money and, and the, uh, the door swings short on the, uh, on the payment window, uh, then we could be in a problem. So we're going to keep a real close eye on it. I really might not have to use it. Might probably don't have to use it. I really hope we don't have to use it, but we can't, if we get a couple, three sick people, and those are people more familiar with how many staff we have at the various treatment plants and at the line department, you get one or two people sick, you get two guys that have hung out with each other and worked on a crew for a day. One gets sick, we lose two of them. We're down two, we have like four people, so it gets pretty, pretty, uh...
Myo talk.
Uh, not desperate, but we have to have some alternatives in place and the money to, to, uh, pay for those alternatives.
My final comment here is, you know, we don't know what's coming down the road. We don't even know how it's going to affect council members and being, and being able to attend a meeting at this point, so it could affect the council too, not just workers, so...
Yes.
I think it's prudent that we have this money on hand now.
I feel that this is imperative, you know, prepare for the worst, have faith in the best, so...
Exactly.
It's emergency affairs, whatever what it's part of.
Mr. Triplet?
Yes, there's no more comments. I'll make a motion to suspend the rules on ordinance twenty twenty dash eighteen.
Good motion by Mr. Triplet, suspend the rules. Second by Mr. Ivy, roll call.
Roll call. Just a second, I'm sorry.
Give me a second.
Mr. Triplet?
Yes.
Or Mr. Ivy? I was, wait, I didn't hear him second.
Yes.
Mr. Baldinger?
Yes.
Ms. Earleston?
Yes.
Dr. Felner?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Okay, passed by six in the vote. Now the ordinance, Mr. Triplet?
Make a motion to pass ordinance twenty twenty dash eighteen.
Okay, motion to pass this ordinance, second by Mr. Triplet, second by Mr., uh, yeah.
Richard.
Richard, yeah. I don't think really, but, Kenny, how, uh, roll call?
Mr. Triplet?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Baldinger?
Yes.
Ms. Earleston?
Yes.
Dr. Felner?
Yes.
Mr. Ivy?
Yes.
That also passed by six in the vote. Last ordinance is twenty twenty dash nineteen, this first reading?
Ordinance number twenty twenty dash nineteen, and town ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to submit application for loan funds under the Ohio Department of Transportation State Infrastructure Bank said program and declaring an emergency.
Through the reading ordinance twenty twenty dash nineteen, uh, discussion?
I'll, I'll go ahead. Didn't come through a committee, so I'll just grab this real quickly. First of all, thank you for getting on the agenda. Uh, this is somewhat of a last-minute idea.
really keeping a close eye on four groups of funds, the electric fund, the water sewer fund, the general fund, income tax stuff, you know, and then, uh, the street fund, which are really three chunks of money, the gas tax, they've been here driving as much or more than they were. I mean, just one of us. One of us, because he's driving back and forth, but no, no more. So, so for the most part, although we don't have much data, both on a state line basis or locally, really expect to see a reduction in gas tax. And even though we had that increase in gas tax, I think our yield probably in two thousand twenty won't be much more than what it was in nineteen. And that will cause us a little bit of a problem. One of the ways that, that the budget is structured and our intention was, is to use those new gas tax revenues, a little bit of the license plate tax, and pay for our share of the Harding Way project, the big million-dollar-plus urban paving project. As a hedge against what may be not thirty, but sixty or ninety days of interruption in income, and a real desire not to lose that major project, I was talking with a family member, they said there wasn't anything wrong with Harding Way. Where, where you been? So I really see Harding Way as, know a little bit about the pavement. It's, it's very much on its last legs, and there's a couple of blocks above town that are god-awful mess. And you think about Wendy's and some of that other stuff, if we hadn't done that temporary patch, it'd be, it'd, it'd be like impassable man. So anyway, if our, if our gas tax revenue goes down, we know our license plate tax is all but going to stop until they open up Bucyrus again. We're going to, we may run into a cash flow problem, and what we'll want to do is transfer less from the general fund into the street fund to pay for this and a number of other things. So having said all of that, what we want to do is give Nikki the authority to make application and have our local share funded through the state infrastructure bank. I don't, the exact percentage is determined at takeout at the end of, you know, of the construction project, and the repayment isn't for a year. Now, it's, in full disclosure, it is takeout financing, means that we'll have to pay that four hundred and forty, forty, sixty thousand dollars, okay? What we'll do is our issue a little bit more of the bond anticipation notes and carry that for a year, and then a year after construction is when the CIB loan starts. So we've got, it's, it's, it's a nice state lending product that, that, the, was around when they put it together, it's not my idea, but it's, it will really work for us. We may not file the application, but we need the authority to do it. If our, if our gas tax funds aren't as bad as I've been worried about, and we start, and we get those license fees back, we'll be okay. But I don't want to hit that general fund hard at a time when our income tax may be shrinking, and we're going to need dollars that we thought we were going to buy payment with, may need to go into cruisers and then the EMS squads to pay salaries, because those, those requirements are going to keep coming. So, long explanation, I hope not too much about what we're doing. Sorry, Mark, go ahead.
How much, how much?
I think it's four sixty is, was our share of the urban paving.
No, 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 no. How much to borrow that?
Oh, I think it's one percent, but I'd be making it up, I'd be pulling it out of memory. It's a function of the interest rate, so.
Is that, would that, would the interest rate be locked in?
Yeah, once, at takeout. When, when we sign the agreement, it'll be this much.
Whatever the interest rate is at that time.
That's right. Everybody's crystal ball is, we might as well throw it out the window on the way home, but it looks like rates will be down, so that bond anticipation note plan to get us the cash to, to be able to ship it off to ODOT. As we know, we have to have that money over there for them to sell the projects, so that's probably what we'll do. But this is a step in the, in the interim that we can take, sit back, see if this looks like it's going to persist, the decline in revenue, and then move on this. I just, uh, we're all subject to criticism all the time, but if we don't act and we lose that million dollars plus unpaid in Harding Way, I'd have no idea how in the world we're going to pay it in the future. Now, if something happens between now and then, and ODOT says, hey, everything's moving back for reasons outside our control, that'll give us a little bit of, of, of time to wiggle room, or time for our, our resources to recover. That's...
That was a question I was going to ask, if there's any possibility of them changing the scheduling on that project because of, because of finances on their part.
I think I'll have Matt videotape the thing and send him a videotape of how quickly it's, it's eroding. So, yeah, it's always possible. I, I was honestly asking those questions of ODOT and, and GPD. Really, on that one, Miss Baldinger, it was more on Portland Way, that, that, that the Portland Way project next year might slip because of all this. And didn't think so. And certainly didn't think it was furloughed, because it's, it's, it's federal money, it's been a long time since federal highway dollars were backed up with gas taxes, let me tell you. That money has been borrowed since some of us were kids, so it's not been backed up. So the federal gas, if, if their gas tax shrink, because nationwide people don't drive, it's not like there are going to be less federal funds. They'll just turn up the dial and the pre-interest and, yeah, send more money out to the state. That is how it works. Anyway, thanks for being so indulgent.
Ms. Earleston?
Is there, I may have missed this, but was, is there kind of a timeline that you're looking at with this project, and what you're...
Yeah, this is the one that we want to sell in July, ODOT sell in July, and we build it around the third Fridays and around Oktoberfest, and get it done this year, out the door by the, by the fall of the year.
Okay.
It'd be a, we've got to move ahead, because we spent a lot of time and money in design and getting ready for it. We're going to buy a fair amount of improvements in terms of those cutouts in the square that are really pretty rad these years.
Mr. Richard?
Well, I do have a motion, um, I have, one thing I'd like to question is, though, it's interesting, is in section four, I think this is about Tyco.
Yeah, that was, I, I corrected it, and I threw away the corrected one and put the...
Okay, so that's our correct.
Yeah, it's been, I, you need to make a motion, though, it should, it...
Yeah, okay.
This is that one they pointed out, yeah.
Yeah, and I, I printed it and threw the good one away.
Okay, you need to make, you need to make an amendment, please.
Yes, yes, that's what I was going to say.
Is that for the airport?
Yeah, it's supposed to say for the, let me see, I've got it right here, hold up. It's, it's for the citizens of Gallion instead of the airport.
And for the citizens of Gallion, is how that's supposed to read?
Yes, except for the airport, yes.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to strike out of ordinance twenty twenty dash nineteen, section four, uh, to promote safety at the airport, and replace those with...
To promote safety, um, for the citizens of Gallion.
To promote safety for the citizens of Gallion.
That's okay. I'll second. Okay, you heard the amendment by Mr. Richard, second by Mr. Ivy, roll call.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Ivey?
Yes.
Mr. Baldinger?
Yes.
Ms. Earleston?
Yes.
Dr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mr. Triplet?
Yes.
Passed by six hundred load. Mr. Triplet?
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules on amended ordinance twenty twenty dash nineteen.
You heard the motion to suspend the rules of this ordinance, may I have a second?
I'll second.
Made by Mr. Triplet, the second by Mr. Richard, roll call.
Mr. Triplet?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Baldinger?
Yes.
Ms. Earleston?
Yes.
Dr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mr. Ivey?
Yes.
It also passed by six hundred load. Now...
Thank you.
Mr. Triplet?
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance twenty twenty dash nineteen.
Okay, Mr. Triplet, second by Mr. Ivy, okay, uh, roll call.
Mr. Triplet?
Yes.
Mr. Ivey?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Baldinger?
Yes.
Ms. Earleston?
Yes.
Dr. Fowler?
Yes.
That also passed by six hundred load. I stand on the resolutions or, or resolution number twenty twenty dash seven, the first reading.
Resolution number twenty twenty dash seven, entitled a resolution approving the appointment of Shelley Bergen to the Gallion City Health Board as appointed by the city mayor and declaring an emergency.
Heard the reading of your resolution, discussion there?
This didn't go through committee, Tammy.
Right.
But I think support, we're down two members. I'm still hoping to hear from another person who's a, actually a former member of the health board. I'm losing hope, but I'll call him, Matt will call him, we'll call him a few more times. This recommendation came from a Vida, I honestly do not know this individual, who I do know is Kim Winkle, who is kind of VP of Operations over there, one of Jerry's right-hand people, and asked her if they had someone over there at a Vida that would be interested and be a good member, so they called back with this name, and so that's where that came from.
Do we know what her qualifications are or her background?
No, I don't. So it is the, this is an alternative to interviewing them in the mayor's office, meeting them once and appointing them, that's what I've been doing. I think there is a bit of a trust factor. I wouldn't throw it at you an hour and a half or hour forty-five minute meeting if they didn't need someone, so they'll be down, they only have three to function, it'd be hard to get a quorum, can't miss anyone. So that's what I think, and, and in this world, the next, always, but the next few months, we're going to trust, have to trust some people, and we trust the Vidas and their judgment and so many things, so that's where she came from.
Right, because the, the reason I'm asking and only concerning is, we're, we're putting this person in a position right now that they're going to have a lot on play, a lot to be part of.
Yeah, I don't know if Kim or Mr. Marasco gave her that look and said, have fun on the health board, but, uh...
I mean, there's a lot that they need.
I think she under, I think she understands, and from what I was told, she wants to do it, she knows there's a need. So she might have been in some of that health planning stuff that's been going on, and where they say everybody's obese and all those health conditions, you know? So she may be active in public health with regard to that. So I, I readily admit, for a guy who complains about people not coming to meetings, here I am, next meeting, jokes on me a little bit, but we do need someone, and it's too bad, there's, with reference to Nadia Olar, there's like not enough young people, and she's flying the coupon, so that's where that new opening came up, she's leaving to go, I think, to Dayton area or something like that.
And I hear, and you're hoping to possibly hear, because we do have that other physician as well.
Yeah.
So you're hoping...
Yeah, I gave him, I gave him, well, I'm not in sales, but I gave him the best sales shop, why it was important, and why he'd be a really good individual, and so...
Is that the only?
No, Dennis already on there.
Yeah, is that the only other name you have then?
Yeah.
Is there other person?
So they'll have a four now, named five's the max, and so, when we meet again, we'll try to appoint the other one, but this will get them through the next few weeks.
Julie?
I've got the mayor, or the letter from the mayor's office here, and it says she is employed as the vice president of physician services.
There you go. I knew that, didn't I, Matt?
Well, I knew.
She's the vice president of physician services for a Vida health system.
Okay, so, I think if she's got those qualifications, I think she's adequate for our health board, and the other thing I'm wondering here, it's a, it's a two-year term, and if something doesn't work out, adjustments can be made in two years.
Anyway, that's what I got, I think, it'll be helpful.
Dr. Fowler?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules on resolution number twenty twenty dash seven and proceed to the final reading.
Good motion by Dr. Fowler, suspend the rules of the resolution, second by Mr. Triplet, roll call.
Dr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mr. Triplet?
Yes.
Mr. Baldinger?
Yes.
Ms. Earleston?
Yes.
Mr. Ivey?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rules passed by six hundred load, now discussion on the resolution motion, Mr. Ivy?
I'd like to make a motion on resolution twenty twenty dash seven for consideration of passage by council.
Okay, for Mr. Ivy, the second by, Mr. Richard?
I'll...
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Ivey?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Triplet?
Yes.
Mr. Baldinger?
Yes.
Ms. Earleston?
Yes.
Dr. Fowler?
Yes.
That also passed by six hundred load. And we've done our business, I think there's been discussions about holding up on committee assignment or these days, we see what can take place, and we write on that, but...
If I might, Mr. President, I was going to share this in my report, but I just wanted to give you a quick update on sunshine law issues. There have been just a difference of opinion among Ohio attorneys, and I'm referring in particular here to city law directors, and to some extent, county prosecutors, in terms of the appropriate way to handle sunshine law concerns, and the sunshine law in general in the context of public meetings. You know tonight that we don't have the public here, but we have the public here via the internet. That is when many cities are proceeding now, we're basically taking the middle ground on this. There are a handful of cities still having regular meetings, and then there are cities like the city of Delaware and others that are doing their meetings entirely virtually, where all of the council members will appear on a single computer screen, but everyone's in their own house, and, you know, that's going on. There was some direction given by the Ohio Attorney General's Office a little over a week ago about this issue. What we're doing tonight is consistent with that advice that's shared. Again, there's still this disagreement among city law directors, so this week, the Ohio Attorney General Assembly is supposed to address the issue of sunshine law when, in the context of public emergency, public health emergencies, such as the governor and Dr. Acton have declared. So what I'm going to suggest to council is that nothing is scheduled until we know how we can hold meetings, and at that time, there'd be some decision made about how to proceed. It might be the case that something like the city of Delaware's model might be acceptable, that would allow for virtual meetings to take place, and by the way, of course, the public gets to see all of this, and they get to see every council person's face at the same time. But if something like that is possible, that may be an answer for the shelf life issue that the mayor's chair, that might help with that, us, for us to be able to actually do some legislation. But nonetheless, I would just suggest that we hold off on any meeting scheduling until we know what the law is going to be.
Agreed. Just going for a council, any input on this or question?
Well, I, obviously, we're going to go with the law director's recommendation or the attorney general, but, you know, I, this is an important decision-making body, and I, I think everybody would, in an emergency, you know, attend, you know, an emergency called by the, and I, I like this seating arrangement, personally, so I'm cool with it continuing.
Put rest of the term?
Yeah.
Just my opinion.
I like this.
Well, one of the nuances with that, Doc, is that there may be a situation where two or three council members are in quarantine or isolation...
Right.
...and are not able to come in person. Then there's a question, well, how do we facilitate that? And that conversation's been going on with everyone downstairs, so, you know, there'll be an answer come out.
I'm sure there will be.
Just to, you spent a lot of time tonight, and no disrespect to your employer, Mr. Trecher, but Spectrum ain't going to do this for free, and we don't have universal access. So one of my concerns about the so-called virtual meeting, it's twofold. One, I can't look at you and say, you dirty rotten, there's no way to feed back the other way, and the other part is... So, one of my concerns about the so-called virtual meeting are twofold. One, I can't look at you and say, you dirty rotten, there's no way to feed back the other way. And the other part is, in our community, I don't know what's the, how many people are hooked up to Spectrum, what percentage? I, it's not 100. It's a bunch of people that said, see you later. I'm jumping the dish, I'm Huluing or whatever that Netflix. So, the assumption that everybody in town has, you know, can tune us in, it's really disappointing to me, the ham bone that I am, I love it, but I just, that's one of my concerns about going virtual. You won't interact, and so, one very last, if we have to meet for some reason while this thing is extended longer than many of us would hope, if the public health emergency extends, I think something like Mr. Miller here tonight was able to participate. And we could have folks out there in the lobby, six and a half feet apart, and as their issue of concern came up, that might be a way to allow a few representatives. If, for instance, the former law director, former auditor, former council member, who was commenting now in an irresponsible way, if she wanted to come in here and tell us we're unconscionable again, we ought to be able to do that. So, I, you know, as much as, I mean, I really think that, it's a shame that that point of view can't be shot down face to face tonight. I was going to, I was going to do it, but you don't want to stay any longer. I don't want to stay any longer.
I, I-
But anyways, that's, those are a couple of concerns. Somebody can't speak to us and tell us which way north is, and not everybody's going to have cable, so there's a certain group, kind of older, like me, and poor, well, that's me too, older and poor may not have the ability to turn on their PC and-
Again, I would just suggest-
That's odd.
Look at what the law is going to be.
Right.
Take the mayor's comments into consideration when you make your decision, because it's really up to Carl how you hold your meetings.
That's right. But everything, everyone really helped a bunch tonight. I think we have enough flexibility and enough resources that, you know, to get through the next month or so, so I'm very productive meeting that together.
Does any of the council have any other business to bring up tonight? If not, Treacher's spark, do you think?
I don't have anything. Did the reconciliation, I think there's like 19.7 million dollars in there. There's about 6 million in the general fund without my looking at again. I think things are doing very well from where we started, but these are difficult times, but I want to thank council for being prudent in their decisions. But I also want us to be hopeful that we will get out of this someday, and that someday is soon. President said it may be Easter for some people, and I simply hope and pray that that happens, and-
I was going to pass over myself, Rod.
So, but, you know, whatever, you know, it's going to take the community to get out of this and all of us together, and, you know, I think we all know that, so.
Audit, Treacher?
Two things, if I hate to take any more time on this. Questions raised regarding income tax in the city of Gallion. The legislature is considering, I've been told by the regional head secretary, to move our state and local deadlines to the July date in correspondence with the federal guidelines on that. We have also confirmed, and I will state this publicly right now, that if that is not passed, city of Gallion, as the auditor, I have the ability to waive any penalties or fees that would be for people filing, and I'll more than likely extend anybody's payment and or filing to that July date without any damage to them and additional funds on that. The second point is, as Rod pointed out, there used to be the ancient curse of maybe you've lived in interesting times, we're in very interesting times on the finance of the city of Gallion on that. Luckily, contrary to what other people may think or have written to you all, we are in pretty good shape. And it will get exciting if this continues, but we will, we have sufficient funds for the short term, and our funds are solid. And we just had a note coming in today, we had a call bond that we were not expecting. We needed to answer that real quick, and it sounds bad, but we were projecting 0.5 to 0.7, if you remember, our investment committee, we're probably going to get a full percent on this. Doesn't sound like much, but that's the best news I've had in three days. Go from there. It's, and the mayor and I are in discussions, as we say, about what we need to do next on dollars. We're both concerned.
Okay. Lord Director Bummer?
Well, I did share with you the sunshine law issue, which is, I wanted to talk about this evening. I did want to stress that, to let you know how connected we are, we are connected with, and I referenced this earlier, with other cities. As you can imagine downstairs, we're having to prioritize and do triage, and, you know, is this more important than that? And it's a very difficult process, but it's one that we're getting through, I think, so far, so good. So, other than that, I'll let, I'll cede my time to the mayor.
Mayor? Thanks, Thomas. Yeah, I'll do, I got, I'll do it within four minutes at most every, I mean, beginning to get tired of hearing the sound of my own voice. If you watch some of this video, just take a second or two nap, what we're asking and what we're looking for, either through legislative action or by just working with the state agencies, the rescheduling of some of our debt. Among the things that are still with us from the fiscal emergency day, days, is that 3-point-something million dollar debt that we have issued in '06 on the sewer fund. I don't know what it was about, but it was 5 million, it's 3 million. It's 800,000 or 900,000 at the end of the year, boy, I would sure like to forget it. So, I don't know if they'll let us do that, but we are talking through our lawyer, our bond counsel, to the state agency, and I said to Russ before the meeting, get a real flavor for who are the responsive state agencies and who aren't. And so, this particular one that we owe, oh, gosh, over almost a million bucks this year in debt service, again, so I won't complain about them too much, been difficult to talk with. So, we're going to try to reschedule that. There are also a couple of things that we've done, some people aren't going to like it, but I'll be upfront about it. Senior members of council remember this, there's been this issue of whether the water plant or the sewer plant pays their electric bill or not, okay? And we came in, they didn't pay it, and then we worked real hard, we got things squared away, and so, they have been paying it. We're going to hold that off till we destabilize a little bit. It will help the water funds, water sewer fund, it will starve, well, not starve, it will reduce income certainly into the electric fund. It'll be more unbeatered service, but really think that they're in a better, if this lasts 30, 60 days, it'll help us. We get back to where people are paying the bills that they're incurring, then we'll probably switch back certainly and start paying, having those people pay for their electric. Talked a little bit about it, I don't, it's, it's maybe the last, one of the last straws that I reach for. There's a bit of a disagreement, or there's not a bit, there's disagreement between Brian and myself, over the issue of indirect costs. Is that what you call them? Cost allocation plan, same thing. And those have all been paid from the various utility funds into the general fund now, about 350,000 bucks. I've been like a kid who wants a second popsicle. I've been wanting to get money, I've been wanting to try to get that back to the utility funds and away from the general fund. I mean, you can see that we have over 6 million. So, we enter into this, squeeze in real good shape in the general fund, and I'm just a little nervous about water. If you go home and you haven't had enough of this, you look, I think sewer can handle it pretty good. It's not where we want it to be, but it's not in as tight a shape as water. So, really looking at two or three things within the budget to marshal resources so that the water fund doesn't get drawn down too far. The one that we're disagreeing, if we can't push some of those debts back a year, I think we'll pretty much be optionless and maybe have to move that back. Last thing I'd say, once the 103 and 104 run out of that fund balance, which will happen pretty fast if income tax drops off 50%, which is, I think, a good planning number. Once that happens, those handful of cops and handful of EMS and firefighters, we'll have to transfer money into the general fund. So, there'll be a pretty major movement of dollars out of that 6.5 million dollar fund balance and into 103 and 104. I think it's easier than to transfer, I don't know, how many employees are there, 10 in those two funds, something like that?
I'm relying share now out of 103 and 104.
Yeah, I don't want to transfer those employees on the payroll back into 101. So, I think what you'll see coming, if it comes with this, and it probably will, if we get stuck, if we dial back more than a month, you'll see the need to transfer some money in May, June, because that 103 and 104, just look at it, it will run out real fast. Pretty complicated, I'm not trying to impress you, I don't have to, you either think I don't work or you know how hard we work at it. So, we're getting up early, staying up late, I don't know, what'll all come of it, but we're trying to, you know, trying to pull, I said it, I'll stop after this. It's not the time to be the rebel. It's not the time with the guy with the black T-shirt on, a tough guy, and, you know, you got plenty of time to do that in life, you just got to be compliant. So, say that, watch James Dean in a movie, you know, watch Easy Riders, and you're laying around doing nothing, and get your rebel out. We just got to go with the flow. As much as I hate that, as much it goes against my brain, that's, that's what we're going to try to do, nothing flashy, but kind of steady eddy. Thank you very much. How many minutes, over four? Two, sorry, Tammy.
All I'd have to say is, thanks to everybody for the extra time they're putting in and all the hard work, the mayor and his staff, and auditor, extra auditor, Treacher, everybody else, council. I thought after my wheel ran off in December, I was on my way until two weeks ago yesterday, so here we are. So, why did they hope we'd get out of here without this thing on? It's not comfortable, is it, Doc?
I'd like to be Cyrus Council President's mask a little better now. Come on, come on, don't you agree? That respirator thing he had on, what a jester. But anyway, something.
But anyway, thanks to all of you, and we'll plant the ear and keep in touch back before it's Mr. Triplet.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Okay, make a motion to adjourn, second by Ms. Earleston, I'll favor say aye. I put legs wide, here by adjourned.